This is the City of Wapaka, first Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
So, we have our regular scheduled city council meeting tonight, but before that, we have a public hearing, and this public hearing is a ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the zoning code to amend 17.104 parent three permitted uses and conditions and uses and 17.312 alternate energy systems. And I'll call that meeting to order. We have everybody, all council members are in attendance, as well as the mayor. So, I'll go right to Jared, if you want to just explain what this public hearing is about.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this starts on page 13 of your packet. This is looking at alternative energy systems in our zoning code. Upon reviewing the different ones in there, starting with electric vehicle infrastructure levels one and two, this is typically, again, something that a typical person really wouldn't even realize is being put into a home. It's usually behind garage doors, things like that. So, there was no, and this was conditional beforehand. So, staff's kind of thinking was, you know, why make them put in or go through a $350 conditional use permit for something that you won't even know that is going in? So permitting that across the board, skipping down to level three, nothing, I guess, not nothing. One of the uses is being changed in there, a couple. It was conditional across the board. It'd be looking to permit in the B4 district and in the I1 and I2 districts. So, reason behind the B4 district, so B4 is typically where our gas stations are, which this level three electric vehicle infrastructure essentially is similar to a gas pump, where you can plug in, it supercharges your car. The example could be the Tesla Superchargers, the stations that they have around the nation, things like that. So, it's a little bit more electricity flowing through. It's a little bit more of a commercial. So, keeping that out of the residential districts, but kind of permitting that in the B4 where there's already gas stations, convenience stores, stuff like that. And then I1 and I2 districts, as well as those are the heavier districts. Geothermal permitting those across the board. So, those typically are all underground. They have equipment above ground, of course, in the structure, but typically not something you'd ever see. We do have some, of course, extra requirements down below that kind of outline different setbacks and things for this to kind of keep everything kosher. So, staff felt for this one, that an extra step of a conditional use really wasn't necessary as well. Same with solar energy systems, permitting those across the board. You know, again, the thought process behind all of these is really putting out there the option for these, making them more obtainable. You know, there have been a significant interest in solar. I do think we'd have some geothermal around the area. It would be nice to see in the new homes that possibly go up in the future. So, just really being able to diversify our, our, our energy generation throughout the city would be good. And then small wind energy systems. So, the only part that would be changing in this is the A1, R1, R2, and R3. There is quite an extensive list of requirements that these small wind energy systems need to meet. Of course, they are only small wind energy systems. So, staff felt as though permitting those in those, permitting those in the select districts would, would be okay. And with the ample amount of requirements down underneath for these, most concerns would be mitigated. So, kind of a lot in this one. Hopefully, explanation wasn't too choppy. Of course, happy to answer any questions when that time comes.
All right. Thank you, Jared. So, as I said before, this is a public hearing. So, we would take testimony in favor of this ordinance change. If you'd like to give testimony in favor, step up to the podium, give your name and address to the record, and limit your time at the podium to three minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give testimony in favor of? If not, we'd be taking testimony in opposition. Is there any testimony in opposition to this ordinance change? Hearing none. I'll declare this hearing closed at 6:08 PM. All right. Okay. Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 1st, 2022, and I'll call this meeting to order. And as always, let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance with the flag of the United States of America, and the Republic of which stands on nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take role, Sandy?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
All right. And I'd also like to introduce the staff by having them introduce themselves. So, Sandy, you want to start?
Sandy Stibbs, City Clerk.
Aaron Jensen, City Administrator.
Kathy Kazza, Finance Director, City Treasurer.
Sue Abrahamson, Interim Library Director.
Jared Requieu, Community and Economic Development Director.
Andrew Whitman, Parking and Rec Director.
Brian Hosele, Chief of Police.
Go ahead, Justin.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works and Virtual.
Thanks, Justin. And Josh is in the back, Josh Warner with IT. And then also on with us tonight, we have Lindsay from the Farm Market, and she's going to be talking a little bit later in our, in our meeting. So, those are the virtual ones, too. All right. In front of you, you have a consent agenda. Sandy has, I think, one addition to that consent agenda.
Yes. Under number five, letter C, approval of bills were uploaded to the city website.
All right. Are there any items that council would like to see, a council member would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda where we would vote on those individually versus under the consent agenda where you vote on all of those items with one motion? All right. With that one addition to the consent agenda, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Keeland, that we approve the consent agenda with that one addition. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Under regular agenda, Sandy, it looks like you have something there, too.
Yes. Under number six, regular agenda, item nine C, information on the employee benefit administrator change to USI was uploaded to the city website.
All right. And that's the only addition to the regular agenda, so we're looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Fair, that we approve the re- regular agenda as, with that one addition. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Under non-agenda items and correspondence, we have, or announcements and correspondence. We have set aside public input. This is for people in the audience, or even staff or council members that would like to speak on a non-agenda item. We do ask you to limit your time to three minutes or less. Anybody that would like to speak on some public input tonight? Colin, go ahead.
I had a correspondence with, actually not a citizen of Wapaka, but a neighboring citizen, and this is someone who uses a lot of Wapaka's services, et cetera. But her input, I'll try and say it briefly, I guess, was her, she was hoping to sign her son up for, I don't think it's going to be any surprise to anybody, sign her son up for three sports ball through the rec department as their, I guess, they live in the town of Scandinavia. The resident, her fee for doing this six-week program for her son would be $217. A resident fee for such a program is $32. And she said she would, she would really like to do such a thing, but thought that the, the large discrepancy between both fees was, I don't know, it would cause her not to participate. She understands that because there's not a relationship between town of Scandinavia and Wapaka to support such programs, that there would be a higher increase. And she's, you know, interested in paying more, but that, that amount seemed really high, was her words. Okay. That's all I had.
Thanks, Colin. Maybe you could share that individual with Andrew at a later time, and he can send her some information on.
Certainly.
How we came up with that number?
Yeah.
Sure. All right. Any other public input? All right. Let's go on to unfinished business. We have ordinance number 032022. This is an ordinance amending municipal code 12.17 of the, and it's the commercial tree trimmers. This is the second reading, but Justin, you want to just brief us again on, on what this is all about?
Yeah. This is changing our ordinance. In the past, when we've done these, it's permitting tree trimming companies to come into city Wapaka and cut trees, trim trees. You know, due to the density of the city, we have to permit it, ensure they're properly insured. And the city attorney would typically sign off on, on that review, ensuring they have proper insurance. Now that we've had a change with the way we handle our attorney, we codified it in, or we want to, in the ordinance. So, now it's just stated the minimum requirements for the insurance. And now, basically, I can just sign off on the permit and insurance at the same time.
All right. Anybody have any questions? We did not get any comments. I'm guessing we would have known from public. Okay. So, this is the second reading, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Motion by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that we approve of ordinance number 032022, an ordinance amending municipal code, chapter 12.17. This is commercial tree trimmers. Any discussion? Sandy will call the role.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right. Next up, we have, under new business, we have ordinance number 042022. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the city of Wapaka zoning code, and this is the first reading. We did have a public hearing in advance of this city council meeting. And so, Jared, if you want to just briefly, again, just explain the changes that have been made here.
Yeah. So, thank you very much. This starts on page 13 of your packet. To assist seeing what's changing, if you go to page 23 of your packet, there is a red line that outlines all of the changes, probably a better one to look at. So, alternative energy systems, electric vehicle infrastructure, levels one and two, permitting that across the board, just kind of eliminating that barrier. There are actually quite a few people in the city talking with our building inspector that already have these in their homes. And just, it's not something you'd ever, it's like changing an outlet, not something you'd ever think about getting a conditional use for. So permitting, permitting those across the board, eliminating that barrier. Level three, as I had mentioned during the, the public hearing, this is a little bit more commercialized. It is similar to a gas tank style, a little bit more electricity. It has the special plug that you plug directly into the car, no adapters. So, keeping those out of the residential districts, keeping them commercial, or keeping them conditional in some of the commercial districts, permitting them in B4, which is one of our higher commercial districts, and then I1 and I2, which of course are industrial. Geothermal energy systems and solar energy systems, permitting those essentially across the board, skipping out of the mobile home park, keeping that conditional for solar and prohibited for geothermal, as just really wouldn't work in mobile home park for geothermal. And then solar, little different since it's in a, a special kind of residential area that's usually owned by a landlord, the common space. So, keeping that conditional, but permitting them across the board everywhere else. And then the small wind energy systems, permitting those in the residential districts. Again, for each of these below, there are all of the requirements outlined for each alternative energy system. Staff feels as though the requirements that are in place would mitigate a lot of, or, you know, I guess, most negative effects. Of course, with anything, there could slip through. But for the most part, all the high-level primary negative effects, staff believe, would be mitigated. There are some just different changes to conform to the change from conditional to permitted down below, and then just some clarity things, trying to clean it up, make it a little more clear as you or residents or staff are trying to read through it. And just kind of catering a couple things that staff felt could be changed and make things easier or accommodate them more to the city. So, happy to take any questions on it, if there are any.
All right. Thank you, Jared, for that explanation. Again, this is the first reading, so you will see this at our next regular scheduled city council meeting, which is March 15th, or no, yeah, March 15th. And so, any comments can be sent to, can be sent to, or stop by at City Clerk's office. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
In specific, in regards to the wind energy proposal, to change it from conditional to permitted, there's a lot of setbacks that are written within here. I guess, I had a question relating to if, if, if it is allowed on a property, and the setbacks, and somebody builds it, and then the setbacks are such that there's, it prevents somebody from building next door, which, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding this correctly. Once you build the tower in a place where maybe there's no building right now, does that prevent somebody from building in a lot next door if it doesn't meet the setbacks required for the, for the, the wind turbine?
So, I think I understand your correct, your question correctly. So, feel free to jump in if I am misinterpreting it. So, you're saying if there is two vacant lots, one lot, they try to build a tower, and then the other lot, they try to build a house, but they can't because of the tower?
That, that's my question. If the tower is permitted, will, will that impact the neighboring lot by making it so someone now cannot build on that lot?
Yeah.
Because the tower is already up?
So, two parts to that. It is an accessory use. So, because it is an accessory use, there would need to be a primary use on the property first. So, they could not just build a, they could not build a wind turbine just on a vacant parcel. It would have to have a home or some, some primary use on it first, whether it's residential or commercial. Now, in terms of the prohibiting another person from building, so the setbacks are from the property lines. So, it would stay within the confines of that parcel. So, it would not prohibit somebody else from building.
As far as the, the heights, when I looked up the code of, of the accessory units, there were, there were height limitations to most things that are called accessory structures. And they seem to be quite small, 35, 25, 15. And I would expect that a wind unit would be quite a bit taller than that. When I looked on the Department of Energy's website, their, their statement was a wind production unit, like we're talking about, would not be effective unless it was at least, the bottom of the wing was at least 30 feet higher than any other obstruction within a 300-foot area. So, I guess I'm questioning, do we even want to have this with, within this accessory structure or accessory dwelling or structure part of our city code? Because almost immediately, if I understand it correctly, it wouldn't be allowed anyway.
So, it is in the accessory uses, and it is somewhat of an accessory structure. It's more of an accessory use. And then within these requirements, it does specifically state, all ground, all ground small wind energy systems may not exceed the maximum principal structure height in the underlying zoning district unless otherwise approved by plan commission. So, it is, it is outside of the height requirements for an actual accessory structure, like a detached garage or yard shed. But it cannot pass the principal structure height unless otherwise approved.
What's, what's that height?
I believe in each of the districts, it would be 35 feet.
And to go higher than that, you'd have to go to the.
Plan commission.
Which is what the conditional use would have to go through anyway, right? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah. So, so if it wanted to go higher than that, the conditional use would come to the plan commission and council. Whereas, I guess, just this one for height exceedance, you would just go to plan commission.
So, in those cases, it seems like just keeping the conditional use, we're not saving anybody anything by, by making it permitted. They still have to go do everything they'd have to do with conditional use permit, anyway.
If they're wanting to exceed that height. If they're not, then they wouldn't have to. So, a lot of the ground wind energy systems, too, you know, technology has come a little bit of, got a little bit better for wind energy, obviously not as good as solar. As solar is more popular. But there are wind energy systems that are on the ground, attached to a pole. There are also some that attach to your roofline that could go on your roof, similar to solar energy. So, there are different ones that could go on. It's not just the ground one that may need to be up at that height. It may be a small-scale one that maybe only, you know, powers something small in your home, garage door opener, some exterior lights, or just something that isn't always needed, but just homeowners trying to cut down. So, yes, to your point, if they are looking to exceed that height limit, they would be coming through the same way. Otherwise, if they're looking to stay under that, which, again, you know, if they're staying under that, there's going to be less effects, less negative effects. So, that's why it would be looking to be permitted, I guess, if that makes sense. And, and, yeah.
It seems to me that an effective wind turbine won't, won't be effective at the heights that are allowed within the permitted use. So, it seems kind of, I, I don't know, redundant's not the word, but it seems more appropriate for it to be a conditional use in any case. That's all.
Go ahead.
Two things. To your point, you know, I, I don't see a reason to stifle innovation. There might be something that'll come in the future, and we can't foresee that. So, there may be some technologies that will allow for good generation below a certain height. But the second thing is, at least with a conventional wind turbine system, where the blade spins in a, in a vertical plane, I don't see anything here about a minimum height that the bottom of the blade would have to be above the ground. My, my concern is just that if there's kids playing, and the neighbors or whatever throwing football around or whatever, and they run into someone's yard, and now they got this blade spinning around at high speeds, at head level, head level or something, it could be a dangerous thing. So.
Yeah. So, to speak on that one, on page 14, number two, it talks about the construction, operation, and maintenance standards. So, the owner shall construct, operate, repair, maintain, replace wind energy system facilities as needed to keep the wind energy system in good repair, operating condition, and in a manner that protects safe individuals from injury. So, with the construction and the protect individuals from injury, I think that would be the kind of point that if, if there was a wind turbine that they decided that they wanted it to be 10 feet tall, and the blade is nine feet tall, each blade, and so it's coming down within a foot of the, you know, obviously, that's not safe. So, we would not be able to, they still have to come through for site plan with all of these. So, when we would look at that, we would say that, that does not operate in a safe manner and protect individuals from injury. This would not be allowed. So, I think that would be the part that would cover that specific concern.
Okay. So, another justification for requiring a permit?
Yeah. And a site plan, site plan would be required no matter what, site plans are, whether it's a change in use or just a accessory structure, fence, you know, all of those site plans are required. This would just be looking at that conditional use permit, which would be an extra step before the site plan permit.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right. Again, this is the first reading, so you'll see the, the second reading of this, where you actually vote on it at the next meeting. All right. Next up, we have land purchase on Godfrey Drive to Mike Cook at 1948 Godfrey Drive. Jared, you're up again.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I will try to keep this one shorter. There's a memo on page 33 and a map on page 34 that outlines the request. So, the owner of Sport and Spine Therapy out on Godfrey Drive had approached staff and inquired the possible sale of land from the city of Wapaka on the vacant parcel next to his. After talking with the business owner, he is looking to expand his parking lot to add some more employee parking, as well as hopefully a future expansion off the rear of the structure, which again, would warrant the need for employee parking off that side in the future for the rear expansion, though. So, his inquiry was to either purchase the whole parcel or just a sliver of it, if that would be possible. After looking into it, staff felt as though the sliver would be more beneficial for both the property owner as well as the city. Just cutting off that sliver would essentially make two equal-sized parcels next to each other. So, the city's still owning one of those equally-sized parcels that could be used and leveraged for development purposes, while still gardening our current business owners with what they need to survive and allow their business to thrive. So, essentially, would have the business owner, if this is initially agreed upon by council, to move forward. The business owner would hire a surveyor. He would survey his new parcel boundaries, as well as our adjacent parcel, submit those in certified survey maps with proper legal descriptions. And then the final price of the land would be prorated based on a, the size that he's looking to take and how much an acre is. So, if he's purchasing a half an acre, it would be half the price of what an acre costs. But we wouldn't know that exact size until it is surveyed and shown with accuracy how much exactly he is looking to purchase. In talks with him, it would be approximately 30 feet, which again, would create two equally-sized parcels. So, really would just be looking for. So really would just be looking for a preliminary approval to move forward with this and start that process. If that is granted, we'll kind of go through that process, and then everything will come back for a final, final agreement. But just wanted some direction to be able to allow that business owner not to unreasonably spend money on a surveyor if it wasn't going to go through anyways.
I'd move to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Martin and a second by Hagan that we allow staff to move forward with the opportunity for Mike Cook to buy a sliver of land that's next to his property on Godfrey Drive. Explain it? Okay. Any comments, questions? Go ahead, Colin.
If he's willing to buy the whole thing, why not sell it all?
So he would be willing to buy the whole thing. He did explicitly state that he would not use the rest of the parcel for anything, that he only wants it for that small parking lot expansion, which just to the east of his building, in between the red line and his building, that is where the parking, extra parking stalls would go. He'd be looking at adding nine or so parking stalls. And then he said any expansion he would do would be off the back of his property or off the back of his building to the south, so down on your screen. So he said the rest would just remain vacant. So after staff talked about it, we felt as though we could leverage it more for some type of development, whether that be, you know, another professional office of some sorts or something complimentary to the neighborhood development to the north. So just just at his comments that he wouldn't do anything with it, staff felt it would be more beneficial in our hands.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we're just going to do a voice vote here. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, say no. Motion carried. Thanks, Jared. Next up, we have the employee benefit, employee benefit administrator change, USI. And Kathy, that's you.
Thank you, Mayor. My item was added onto the website yesterday, and this is just a change in the benefit broker. We've done this seven years ago when we went from M3 to the Horton Group. We were notified by the Horton Group that our current agent has resigned, and now our former broker that was with the Horton Group is now allowed to come in and work with the city of Wapaka again. Rayanne Bodry was with the Horton Group. She's now with USI, who's also the employee benefit admin broker for the school district in Wapaka County. She's served us before she left the Horton Group. So she came back and gave us a presentation of what USI can provide to the city for benefit administration. So Rayanne is on the virtually.
I am here. Thank you.
So she can go through the presentation and tell us what we are going to get. There is no cost to the city to change our benefit administration. It is part of the broker's fees that through our premiums, they get paid. So let Rayanne give us information on what USI can give us.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you so much for having me on today. We would be privileged to become the benefit broker again. USI is the second largest privately held insurance brokerage agency in the United States. And what we bring is a fully in-sourced and very competent, complete broker service. So we would be taking over the medical. We're talking with the city about a incentivized primary care physician relationship. We have legal services on our team. We work with all of your carriers and are looking forward to negotiating with them on your behalf. We can continue to manage the family savings plan and go through 65. So there's, I think, I attached about a 48-page presentation. Everything that is in that presentation, with very few exceptions, is included as a value add for the city of Wapaka. So I'm privileged and honored to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Yeah, Mary, go ahead.
Can you just explain what a incentivized primary personal physician, did you say?
Primary care physician. So
What does that mean?
What that basically means is we're looking to bring some with a combination of virtual resources as well as coordination with your in-network providers that currently work with city staff and their dependents that are on the health insurance plan to make sure that people are getting all of their annual physicals taken care of, some of the preventive care services that sometimes, particularly with the high deductible health plan, go unrendered. And we're looking to do that at a very cost-effective rate. So there's a per employee per month fee that's capitated, and it it provides resources such as all those personalized visits via virtual care, and then any coordination with services that need to be done at a physician office, such as labs or x-rays, would be would be coordinated with that nurse practitioner. It also includes 550 prescription drugs at no cost. And again, we're just encouraging people with either chronic medical conditions or those that are hesitant to see a provider because perhaps they've gotten billed for what they thought were routine or preventive services before, to be working with these nurse practitioners to make sure they get every service they're entitled to, that your plan already pays for, and we keep the well, well. And those people that do have some medical conditions, we keep them on the road to as good a health as we can.
While incentivizing them to to do virtual visits as opposed to in-office visits?
Well, the virtual visits are for things that you might otherwise go to urgent care for or that you have any questions about. And then the coordination is for things like, for example, if I have high cholesterol, I need to get my blood work done either every three months or every six months, depending upon the status of my medication. We're going to coordinate that blood work to make sure it's done in the most cost-effective setting. And those nurse practitioners then follow that individual. The incentivization is not to see, not to go see a practitioner when you need to, but to make sure that you keep up with all of your treatment protocols, that you're getting the right care at the right setting at the right time. For a capitated fee, the employee pays no additional cost for that.
Thank you.
All right, Aaron, you said you had a comment.
Yeah, just one comment. Rayanne, I was just wondering if you could just very briefly touch on, we talked about the data set that you have, your company has, that can help in this challenging employee recruitment market to basically benchmark municipalities and organizations with their benefit packages, which is very challenging. Wages is one thing, salaries is one thing, but trying to figure out how competitive benefit packages are. Can you speak to that just for?
Sure. We have a benchmark survey that comes out each and every year. And in fact, the the link for that survey was just released about the end of last week. And what our benchmark tool does is it takes our data sets from our 500,000 clients across the U.S., and it feeds that that benchmarking report. We would be adding the city of Wapaka's benefits to that, along with each and every one of your comparables. We would then be able to slice and dice what everybody has done for 2022, so it's a real-time survey. And we would be able to determine whether your deductibles are too low in comparison to those of your comparables. Are you charging too little? Or are you charging too much? And you need to maybe make a make a reduction in those those sorts of things. So it benchmarks all of your different data sets and provides an algorithm that shares with the employees and with the city exactly what the value to each of them is. So what's my total out-of-pocket? What's my risk? What is the city paying? Did I, was I aware that the city has a better better benefit package than most of my comparables? For example, better than the counties or better than the school districts? And I think you'd be surprised with the results. But it is real time. We can do trending benefits, so things that people are asking for in order to recruit and retain. So things that are coming up that we're seeing regularly on these surveys are, they want to know, for example, employers want to know, are other employers offering what we call parental forming benefits, adoption, infertility treatments, et cetera? Or are we doing, should we be doing something different with our PTO or sick leave banks? And if we're if we're doing some of those things, and the city provides, you know, dollars into an HRA or an HSA, all of those things count, and people come to appreciate those things less as time goes by. So the benchmarking survey serves to not only inform the city as to what you can do and where you could make changes, but it also serves as a reminder, we can share the slides with the employees and their dependents to show where the city is really excelling. And it's in real time.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Kathy, any other comments?
No. Like I said, we've worked with Rayanne before, and I recommend that we go with USI.
All right, so the recommendation from Kathy is is that we change our employee benefit administrator to USI. That is a form of motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Martin, that we approve changing our employee benefit administrator to USI. Any further discussion?
Why did we end our previous relationship with this organization?
Oh, with the Horton Group?
No, you said you worked with USI in the past.
No, we did not work with USI in the past. We worked with M3 and then went to Horton Group. And then now that our agent has resigned, we're and Rayanne no longer has a non-compete clause
Oh, so
From the Horton Group.
The employee we worked for.
We worked.
But not the organization.
Right.
Okay, all right, fine.
So now that she has a non-compete clause, we're able to get back with her and her expertise that she's had. She has over 25 years in this business and has been in the past very proactive in making sure that our health insurance premiums and and our employees are taken care of as far as our benefits are concerned.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, you ready to vote? Sandy will call a roll.
Scott Burchatsky.
Aye.
Demetri Martin.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Excuse me, aye.
Alan Kielin. Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Meo.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Paul Hagan.
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you, Rayanne.
Thank you so much, and I'll be in touch shortly.
All right, moving on, we have the proposed employees' rewards program, and I'll turn it over to Aaron.
All right, thank you, Mayor Smith. You will see a memo, council members, on page 35, starting on page 35 of your packet. I do mention in that memo that I'll make a brief presentation, so I'm going to actually go to the other side of the room to do that, as it'll be a little easier. I'll come back to this if we need to. Just have to change my inputs. All right, so there are some slide, a slide deck I put together, if you can direct your attention to the large screens. First, before I even start, I want to say that this has been an ongoing conversation between myself, Mayor Smith, department heads. We have this as a running agenda item for each one of our department head meetings, which happens twice a month, every Tuesday that there's a council meeting, and we've had conversations since October on this. So I want to thank all of the time and effort and thought that department heads have put into it, as well as their feedback, and as well as our supervisors, who've been involved in some other meetings, and just all of city staff who have communicated with our department heads. So first, I just want to go over the goals. The purpose of this program would be to recognize employees who perform their job duties to desired standards. Now, you may say, or someone may ask, well, why would we, you know, why would we do that? Shouldn't everyone be performing their job duties to desired standards? And I think the answer is yes, we certainly hope so, and that is our expectation. However, you know, right now, we are in a challenging job market, and we, as municipalities, not only us, but across the state, and especially the state of Wisconsin with levy limits, are handcuffed some by those levy limits. And it's tough to give, especially this year, when we have inflation of 5-point-whatever percent, you know, we may only be able to afford sustainably a 2% permanent raise. So this would be an opportunity to recognize employees for their good work, meeting expectations in a tier-one-level-type reward in that one-time bonus-type payment. Number two, to further reward employees who are actively improving, growing, and meet individual growth plans, I'll get into that. That's going to be tier-two, which I'll talk about in a second. And honestly, my favorite, and in my humble opinion, the most important, is to build leaders and develop our people from within. And I'll get into how I think that, how we think that can happen. So who's eligible for this proposed program? All regular full-time and all regular part-time employees, as defined in the employee handbook. So it is pretty much what you think it is, regular full-time employees, 40 hours per week. Regular part-time employees are employees that work 12 months out of the year and also are capped at a maximum of 59 hours per pay period. I'll get into a couple of different levels of those part-time employees as we go on as well. The program in action, so how does it look? How does it work? Right now, we have a evaluation system that was put in place by my predecessor and the department heads at that time, probably around 2016 or 17. And we would use that evaluation system and to administer this program and have our supervisors administer the program. So step one, as we typically do, supervisors and employee will review the employee's job descriptions to ensure accuracy and completeness and form a shared understanding of that. Sometimes we can go a couple of years and not review those job descriptions. So it's important, if we're going to have money tied to it, we need to make sure that there's a shared understanding from both the supervisor and the and the staff member. And then also, well, let's get go, I'm skipping forward to step number two. As a part of that, they will also be developing, in that original meeting, they'll be developing a plan. So when I say they, I mean the staff member. The staff member will be developing a growth plan for themselves and an individual development plan that they'll be taking to the supervisor. The supervisor will have their thoughts on paper and what they think that can help that employee as well and the organization. And they're going to collaboratively build this development plan and set them in SMART goals, and I'll get into that in a second, that can be measured throughout the course of that year. If the employee meets those SMART goals, they would qualify for tier-two, assuming they qualified for tier-one, which is meeting all of their job expectations. Step three is meeting with the employee and developing those SMART goals that I just discussed. So SMART goals is goals that are specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timely. So they have to be very specific, the way they're written. There was a training that our supervisors went through. We have 22 supervisors, and all of them got some information and resources on how to do that. I just sat down with one of our departments this week, and we went through sample SMART goal setting for some of the supervisors and other staff in that department. Step four, the supervisor will write a summary report and share it with the employee. This report should confirm the accuracy of the SMART goals or the job description and the SMART goals. They'll also detail how the supervisor-employee plan to work together to achieve those. So this would just foster that relationship and development between the two. Step five, the employee and the supervisor would meet a minimum of twice per year to check in on their progress, see how things are going. A lot of times in evaluation processes, it's really easy to get caught up in everything else, and your first meeting is at the end of 12 months. And all of a sudden, that's the only time that information was shared, and there can be surprises. We want to avoid all surprises. Not only do we want to check in twice a year, we want to have conversations on a regular basis, and that's what one of our trainings was about. But from a formal standpoint, this program would require the But from a formal standpoint, this program would require the checking in twice per year minimum, one being the end-of-year evaluation. Supervisors at that time will determine and communicate if the employee is on track for a tier-one, tier-two, or possibly no reward, or no award at all. And they would work to talk about how they can correct that, if possible, that trajectory. Step six, the supervisor will hold that end-of-year evaluation. We just touched on, that would be between Thanksgiving and January 1st, and at this time, they would go through their end-of-year evaluation process and award employees within their staff. Step seven, this is a checks and balances and kind of a step to ensure that there's some consistency in standards. So supervisors will share theirs with their direct reports. So for example, the street superintendent would share his with the director of public works, the director of public works would share his with the city administrator, and that would happen so throughout the organization and throughout reports, so there can be some consistency of standards. And the reality is, is that we're going to go through that and probably see that the standards are a little different, depending on the departments, but this will allow us to react to that and make adjustments over the three-year period that we start this, hopefully. Rewards, so this is the reward setup, and if you were able to take a look in your packet, this is also in the draft language. So you can see the, there's a, just a basic cost of living adjustment, and that is for someone who did not receive tier-one or tier-two. So I think the one thing we want to be very, very clear on is that all employees will receive the cost of living adjustment, just as they have. So if there's a 2% cost of living, those employees will receive that. The tier-one reward, which is the person that met job expectations, they'll receive as a full-time employee, a $300 bonus at the end of the year. Regular part-time employees, which is classified as over 1,040 hours, would be prorated at 150, and then regular part-time employees underneath that threshold would be $75. The cost of living adjustment plus tier-two award is the highest reward, and that is for everyone who meets the tier-one, and then also meets their SMART goals and their growth goals. That would be, as you can see, the regular full-time employees, an additional 550 on top of $300 for the tier-one, or their choice of three additional floating holidays and not the 550 cash incentive. That actually, we didn't have that written in there at first, but that came out of a staff survey that we threw out to all of staff, and staff, it was equal. What, what motivates us, what, and it was between monetary incentive, and it was time off and flexibility, which is a conversation that probably doesn't surprise many people here. Regular part-time employees over the, that 1,040-hour threshold, you can see $275 in addition to the 150. And then with it being part-time, we did not have that, that flexibility built in, just because of the less hours. And then also the regular part-time, underneath that threshold, you can see it's prorated at 125. So this may be a following scenario in any year, and the percentages could go up, down, sideways. So 50%, let's say we take a year, 50% of employees receive tier-two awards. So that amounts to 24,000, oh, I have terrible eyes, in between 24 and 25,000. 40% of employees receive tier-one awards, that just over 7,000. And then 10%, let's say maybe don't receive an award because they didn't meet expectations. So that actually gives us a rollover amount of over $18,000. So the neat thing about that is if we budget $50,000, which we have in the budget this year, $18,000 could rollover to next year, which means that future budgeted amounts wouldn't have to be as much. Potentially, that could be less and less over the course of a couple of years. Or there could be a decision, if it was well-received, that award amounts could be increased. That would be a decision that council could make in the future. So we understand how important it is that each of our 22 supervisors are trained and well-trained and know how to perform evaluation, which is why we had an evaluation, formal training at the beginning of February for all 22 supervisors. This would be an expectation as a part of the program, that we do some sort of a training every year. Now, will it be at Fox Valley Tech every year, and will it be a half a day or more? I don't know yet. I think we'll work on that, but, you know, it may come in the form of virtual training, it may come in the form of, of whatever the best options are out there at the time. But it will be required that all management positions go through an evaluation training each year as a part of this program. So this is a timeline that we've, kind of looking backwards and forward. So I've mentioned already, October 2021 is when we started these conversations, December 12, 2021, we had a presentation that we gave at a staff holiday meeting, December 8th, kind of outlined these details. The details haven't changed all that much, although they have a little. February 3rd and 8th, I just mentioned, we had an evaluation training at Fox Valley Tech for all supervisors. We're sitting here tonight, March 1st, and if it gets passed through city council and adopted through the employee handbook, we'd be looking at supervisors and staff with the expectations of going through these meetings in step one and step two in April, and then having those check-ins July, August, and then completing it November, December. So I want to just speak on this really quick. This is something we talked about in our last department head meeting, and just kind of forced me to think about, you know, developing leaders and how are we doing that? And I think when you're in a small municipality, smaller municipality, we, a lot of people will call us working supervisors, because we're doing a lot of, a lot of the day-to-day stuff. And I think that's an absolutely fair classification, but I think sometimes when we talk about working supervisors, it negates our responsibility to lead people and to develop our staff underneath us. We can get so busy in the day-to-day that we forget to prioritize that stuff. So in my eyes, the highest-level leaders have the ability to create a shared vision and, and all of that, but more importantly, they shift their focus from production themselves to the production of the people that they're in charge of and the development of people's potential. And I think now in our, our, our labor market that is challenging to find people from the outside, I think it's more important than ever that we are training people from within, developing people from within, growing people so that people are ready to step up in, in new positions, should they have that interest. So that's all I have as a part of the, the presentation. Does anyone have any questions for me on the program?
I would just like to say, this is great stuff, and I really like your definition of a highest-level leader in particular. My, my comment was, would, have you given any thought to having the dollar amounts, the, say, $300 a year, whatever, have that readjusted based on cost of living every three years, like to the nearest $25 or something like that, so that we don't have to necessarily think consciously to adjust it up? It's just built into the plan.
Good question. We have not had that specific conversation. I think all of us as department heads and Mayor Smith, who's been involved in these conversations, we, we fully expect to, at the end of year one, and, and who knows? What does inflation look like, right? Does it look like over 5% again? Does it look like more? Does it look like less? And I think we want to have the flexibility to have those conversations. So yes, this will be in the employee handbook, but there's not something to say that we can't have this conversation based off current circumstances and change those things. So I think that it's worth having the conversation. We haven't had it yet.
Other questions? Alan, go ahead.
I think you and I had a discussion last fall about making this a percentage of wages or salary rather than a fixed amount, and what, what drove you to go to the fixed amount?
We did. We had quite a few conversations over a number of meetings on that, and it actually kept coming up. So we, you know, this isn't like a, don't get me wrong, it's not anything to sneeze at, it's also not a giant, giant amount. We feel that the level of responsibility of positions are reflected in the annual salary pay or wages. We also know that the city administrator, for example, my 2% per year is much greater than the position in the library, let's just say. And this is a way to basically say that we value everyone's effort, not one more than the other. And we felt collectively as a group that it was important to reflect that in the structure of the, of the awards, if that makes sense.
Other questions? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. In your presentation, it didn't, I'm looking at the two different things. I wanted to confirm whether or not the floating holidays had to be used within the next year.
Yeah, great question. Yes, it does. So it would be awarded, let's say, let's just say an evaluation's done and it's awarded on December 1st, they wouldn't kick in until January 1st of the next year, and it would have to be used within that 12 months.
And further, these awards are paid one time or throughout someone's salary the entire year?
One time.
So it's a one-time bonus at some certain time in the year?
Yep.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mary.
How is the spend met by the employees?
Man, that's a, that's a really good question. I think mixed. I think overall, well, so let's be honest, when we first started talking about this, October, November, without any details, and just the thought of, hey, we're going to potentially have rewards tied to evaluations, I think there was more nervousness. I think as we've had this last over about five months, potentially a little more, we've tried to, well, certainly, department heads have been a huge part of it, and then tried to include supervisors and staff along the way and get some feedback, and also provide them an understanding. I think more and more staff members feel comfortable with it. Now, does that mean every staff member feels comfortable with it and is really excited? No, I'm not going to say that. I think change, it's different, right? This is a different system, a different structure, and anytime you have that, you're going to have some that just are a little less comfortable with it.
I think it's a terrific program. Again, as Dimitri said, your emphasis on creating leaders and creating people who have something to say about their job and their work, their work ethic, their, the amount of work, how they do their work, for the employee to have an input in that is, is really good. So kudos to the, all of you who made this up or didn't make it up, but put it together, that's what I mean.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I do have to say that honestly, and I'll also be, I was a little hesitant as well in the first month, and it was something actually that Council Mayor Smith had as a little bit of a direction for me. And as I worked through it, I can honestly sit here in front of you today, and I do feel like it's the best thing for the organization. So credit to you guys as policymakers as well.
An additional question, as I was thinking more about Alan's point. A floating holiday is worth quite a bit more to a higher-paid employee than a lower-paid employee. And is that, is that kind of a reverse, how do I say, incentive? You know, well, you know, I'll take more time off.
Yeah.
And then in addition to that, a second question related to floating holiday, is that paid for through the $50,000 we've set aside in the budget? Is that holiday coming out of that chunk of money, or is it paid through some other method?
So I'll answer your first question first. Another really good question, and something we talked about. We, what we did is we just averaged what, I think that, it's at a rate of pay of about $35 an hour, that floating holiday, and that gets you to about three. So yeah, there's going to be some employees that, you know, fall short or, or hire or whatever.
Right.
But we didn't want to make it overly complicated and administratively burdensome, which is why we came up with that. As far as the pay, the floating holiday, I'll let, well, I'll let Kathy kind of grab the mic. So Kathy, do you have anything you want to say about that?
It depends on the employee. You have salaried employees, which this would have no budget impact at all, other than they'd have a day off. And you have hourly employees, and that would be an impact. So that would be the difference.
Funded from the?
From the, from the money that's in the budget, yep.
Slated to the employee rewards program.
So Colin, we budgeted that off of $50,000, off of everyone taking the cash. So really, likely, if the more that took the floating holiday, the more it would actually save.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and we looked at the floating holidays too, and, and wanted to make sure that it didn't create an issue within the employment of the city. So one thing is, is we, we're not, we don't want additional overtime to cover that floating holiday, so they have to work through that part of it. So I think it's well-thought-out, and, you know, we talk about pay and time off, and what's more important to you is maybe different to other people? So I, I think it's great to have a couple of options, quite honestly. You know, and I, Paul, go ahead.
I'm assuming this payout will be just as a, as an extra line on their pay stubs, pay period? Is that correct?
Yeah, a separate check, probably, most likely. Right, Kathy?
Well, that kind of goes to my question. It just seems like it would be more effective of a reward if it's, if it's differentiated somehow than just a line on your normal paycheck. Oh, my paycheck's a little bigger, it's different, versus getting a separate paycheck or some other type of, of payout from it, where it seems like it would be better that way versus?
Yeah, we haven't talked about that, but I totally agree with you. I, I think we did this last year when we gave everybody a bonus, you know, during, before Christmas and so on. We actually did it with Christmas card-type things. We put it in there, and I'll tell you, it was much more appreciated. And we actually had an event over at the rec center too, where we had a lunch there too, and I think everybody appreciated a lot more. So I, I agree totally with you, Paul, that it should be something separate.
We have to look at the income tax.
I realize that. That's what I was thinking.
And, and, and the fact of, you know, whether or not this is additional wages that are subject to Wisconsin retirement. So if it would be considered it would have to go on a supplemental check, we wouldn't include it in. So we would have, we'd have to look at all of the parameters that the, the program has and how it fits in for tax purposes and benefit administration. That's a legal question.
Sure, you sure do take the fun out of it, Kathy.
I was thinking the same thing, but yeah.
Yeah, I just have one, one more suggestion. It would be nice if there was a way to recognize these individuals for whatever they achieve publicly, maybe in front of their peers or at some sort of an annual gathering. That might provide some additional motivation to be recognized in front of their peers for, it might cause people to stretch a little bit.
Yeah, just made a note of that, Dimitri, and we'll, we'll continue to keep this on our agendas as discussion points for, with department heads. I'll bring that up.
Scott, did you have a comment?
Yeah, back to Kathy's point, I guess you're talking about these dollar amounts, 300s and stuff. So you're going to have to work out the logistics of, okay, is it $300, and then we have to take taxes out, so it won't be $300? Or, you know, that's, I guess, you've said a dollar amount, but if they take, you know, how we get stuff taken out for feds and states, it'll, their pocket won't reflect that.
Well, either way you look at it, it's taxable income.
Yeah, well, I guess it'll get it either way, yeah.
And you can't gross it up because $300 to a single individual versus a married person that doesn't have as much with them. I mean, there's, there's, you know, that, that is the gross. I get it. I get it.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to come up with an even number.
That, that does bring a point, though, that we, it was really important, we budgeted for everyone to get it. So, you know, there's, it's not like we are playing conservative and only budgeting for 80% of our people to get it. We're budgeting for everyone to get tier two. So. That's not saying that that's going to happen, but I'm just saying, we didn't want it there to be, hey, I didn't have a chance, because you didn't have the funding for it.
I, I think that there's many cool things about this, and, and not to go over everything that Aaron put on there, but there, there's a lot of cool things that are on there, but the one that really stuck out with me is, is that, you know, when, when you talk merit pay, and, and we've been avoiding that name because we, we, we like the idea of just calling it employee rewards, it doesn't have any negative connotation like merit pay could have in the past. But the one thing that we're doing different than, than they did in the old plans was, is that we're giving your, your goals ahead of time. You have, you know what your goal is, and you have to obtain that goal. We're not going to tell you at the end of the year, hey, you didn't do a good job, so you're not going to get it. You're going to know throughout the year whether you're doing what you need to do to get this incentive. Any other comments? Paul?
Just to add to that, I think it's, it's excellent that the employee has input into those goals, too.
Great. Thank you. We haven't voted on it yet, so I'm not going to thank you yet, but yeah, let's, do we have a?
A motion to approve the proposed addition to the City of Opaq Employee Handbook.
Second?
We have a motion by Colin Dykstra, second by Dimitri Martin, that we approve the Employees' Reward Program and add this to our City of Opaq Employee Handbook. Any further discussion? Again, I, I want to just remind everybody that the dollar amount was budgeted, and so that is in your budget. This will not be an additional cost to the 2022 budget. Seeing no other discussion, Sandy will call a roll.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
And Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, let's move on then. We have a 2022 Farm Market Memorandum of Understanding, which is on page 40 through 51 of your packet. I just want to, if you're looking through your packet at this time, just be a little careful that the first part of that is the old memorandum of understanding, and then later, as you go through the packet, you'll see the new one. But Aaron, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smith. Again, just to reiterate what Mayor said, page 40 of your packet is my memo, the start of my memo. So a little background on this, in 2018, the City of Opaq entered into a memorandum of understanding with the nonprofit organization Living the Opaq Away and UW Extension. It was memorandum of understanding was a part of a grant being received for the funding of a farm market coordinator. That grant ended up funding actually one more year than was expected. It was actually supposed to be a two-year grant at first and funded the expenses tied to that position, which is part-time for three years. So over this past year, our grant writer, Greg Gromen, did research a number of opportunities for funding this position, knowing that we did not have that grant anymore. And I know that Lindsay, who's online, also did some looking into that, as well as Christie from UW Extension. And unfortunately, we were not able to secure the full amount. There has been $7,500 that has been obtained and an additional 1,000 for material-type expenses, leaving approximately $5,850 of unbudgeted expenses for the position in 2022. In that grant, they did talk about some measurables. How are we going to know if this is going to be successful? And one of the measurables was increasing vendors 10% year over year. And I can tell you, that was achieved and probably surpassed by quite a bit. And then also, they had economic activity would be increased 3% to 5% year after year, and that's inconclusive. And I think that's something we're going to strive to get a little more information on this year if, if we can continue forward. So, so to be perfectly honest, some of my thoughts on this, I've been working with Lindsay, who's online, Christie from UW Extension, and Sandy Robinson, who's the treasurer for Living the Opaq Away, who is managing the, the money in the farm market account right now. This is something that I see as a big value to our downtown, especially off the heels of a downtown reconstruction project. However, I, I, I don't know if I believe it's the city's sole responsibility to fund the entirety of this thing into the future. I think that this does have an opportunity to continue to look for grant money or partnerships. I think there's a lot of organizations or individuals that stand to, to benefit from the vibrancy that it brings to downtown. And I would, basically, I'm suggesting or recommending that we help in a stopgap year with the expectation that there's more funding solutions that come forward as a part of the 2023 budget process. So it, it doesn't have to fall so heavy on the city. I, I do believe the stopgap year is important, and the reason is, is that there has been a lot of momentum that's been generated over the last three years. I would hate to see it fall flat on its face and go back to a couple vendors, just because we, you know, we couldn't figure this out for 2022. So I'm, I'm recommending to enter in the, into the memorandum of understanding, which outlines our commitment to help fund that stopgap in the amount of, I believe, $5,850 or no more than that. I, I do also want to state that we will be working between now and the summer and throughout the summer to even help close that gap, but we do need to start planning, and Lindsay needs to start planning for those things. The last thing I'll say, and it's something that I, I spoke with Kathy on today, you know, this has been kind of a pseudo-city position, where we, we did bring her on as an employee, but it wasn't really acting as an employee. Well, now with the city, if this does go through taking on about half of those expenses, I think I would like to talk with Lindsay in treating her more as a city employee, having expectations tied to that, like we do with every other city employee, throughout 2022. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Do we have any questions? Dave, go ahead.
Just checking the numbers, Aaron. You said we have a $7,500 grant, and you said there was another $1,000 from where?
Uh, it's, it's another grant. I don't remember the exact grant. Lindsay, if you can hear us, do you remember what that additional $1,000 was from?
That's $1,000 from Data Care.
Data Care.
And we received that already as well, so we have it.
Which would then leave your total at 4850, not 5850.
Does that include the, what, what is the total cost of the budget, Aaron?
Um, I think I have 13.
I'm not on that.
Uh, let's see, yeah, $13,350.
Does that include the supplies too, though?
It does.
Okay, so the $13,350 minus 8,500 is the 48.
Is the 40, is that?
4,850.
Okay, then Dave is spot on.
Right. Is that what you're asking for, or are we missing a number?
Nope, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
So, thank you.
All right.
I think it's a good program. I think we should keep it. I don't know where that 4,800 is going to come from, out of the general budget? Is that what we said, or?
Kathy?
Dave is correct, is that we would just run it through the general operating budget in the civic promotions and, and, and see where we are over and under during the year. And 4,800, I'm not too concerned about it.
We, we do think, and Aaron alluded to this too, though, that he has reached out to a couple of organizations for help in paying for this, and at this time, they've denied that. But, you know, I, I think we're going to go back at those because we feel that they're, they're an important part of, of the downtown as well as, as the city is, or maybe even more so. So we're going to ask them to, to step up and help contribute because, I mean, ultimately, the goal here is, is that, you know, this is going to be self-sufficient and not using city funds, but using income that's made from the farm market and also from grants and, and income that comes from, from the community that does benefit the most from having this program. But I agree completely. It's a great program, and I would hate to see it. If you come down here on a Saturday and you see how many vehicles are in the downtown, I almost think there's more vehicles on Saturday than there is the rest of the week down here. So I'd hate to see that. The one thing we, and this really has nothing to do with the MOU, but we, we, it's grown so much that we might even have to look at, at a different location, and we've already had that discussion too, a little bit. So, not to scare anybody, but it, you know, I mean, it's, it will be, we feel a better location, but that's the discussion we have too, so that they can continue to grow. Yeah, any other questions? Scott?
Aaron, will you or one of the other leaders here take the lead on finding other possible sources of help? Is that your job, or is it going to be a combination?
So that's a great question, Scott. I think I'm, I'm going to be a part of the effort. I think as much of that falls on the other partners, Living the Opaq Away, UW Extension, and Lindsay, the farm market coordinator. So I will ask them to take their own lead in that, but I will be there to assist.
All right.
I'm thinking of that answer, and I'm thinking that, that the true answer is, is that the farm market should generate the revenue. We're just helping them out in the interim. That will be a job that they should take over in the future. Okay, so what we're asking for tonight, or Aaron's asking for tonight, is this memorandum of understanding, and also that we contribute $4,850 towards the budget that is needed. Anybody like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Keeland, that we approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Opaq, Living the Opaq Away, and the Extension of Opaq County, and also put $4,850 towards this budget. Any further discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thanks, Aaron. Lindsay, thank you. Up next, we have updated room tax agreement. Aaron?
All right, this is memo on page 52 of your packet. This is largely administrative in nature. Actually, we did approve this room tax agreement in a different version this summer. We've been through a couple of meetings and just made some cleanups, making sure we reflected state statutes. All of those are seen in the five bullet points on your memo there, section 6, 7, 10, and 13. Nothing really substantial that was changed. I know Colin is on, serves on that committee with me as well. Really, I'm just recommending to approve the, this version of the room tax agreement, which has been approved by Dayton and Farmington as well. Colin, anything to add to that?
No.
All right. Thank you. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve this updated room tax agreement.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Fair, second by Chestnut, that we approve the updated room tax agreement. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, license report 1567. This is an operator's license. You can see that there's three names on there. We'd be just looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that we approve license report 1567. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. I actually have nothing additional tonight. Anybody have anything they want to add? Paul?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we adjourn till our next regular council meeting on Tuesday, March 15th, 2022, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. We're adjourned at 7:29 PM. Have a great night.